Hello, Michael Dallamonica. And we are here at the Fitchburg School Committee Debate. The only debate of this election season for the Fitchburg School Committee candidates. And here at FATV in conjunction with LAP TV. So let's get right to the questions. First of all, let me introduce the candidates. Christopher Batanzi, Lindsay England, Deborah Jeffries, Gene Robbie, and James Walsh. Thank you, everyone. Let's get right to the questions. Chronic absenteeism is a problem in just about any public school. Especially in Fitchburg, we've seen some troubling trends. How, if elected as a school committee member, how would you use your voice to battle this issue of chronic absenteeism with students? So we're going to start from my left, and we're going to go around to the candidates. I would ask that you give an initial one-minute response. That way, we'll have time for some back and forth. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the question. Chronic absenteeism is defined by the state as missing more than 10% of the school year. In a 180-day school year, that's 18 school days spread throughout the year. Fitchburg Public Schools, as of the most recent data, has experienced a 40% chronic absenteeism rate. That means four in every 10 students miss 18 days or more. The data is spread evenly throughout all of the schools. When I was looking at the data, it seems to me like that's a recent problem. That's a COVID problem. My position is COVID is over. We need to get students back in schools. We need to provide them with the classes, the friend groups, the peer interactions, the time to get back in school, the time to learn, and we need to make that a top priority for our public schools.
Ms. England.
You know, in a situation, and thank you also for the question, in a situation where we have absenteeism, you really have to do a little bit of digging and figure out what the root of the problem is. You know, you may have children who are dealing with health issues. You may have family issues. You know, there could be a number of reasons for it. And I think until you really get to the root of it and figure out what the problem is, you can't find the solution. If you have children who are sick, if they have COVID, if there's some other issue going on that they can't leave the home, maybe we can find a solution like the Chromebooks for a temporary or extended period of time. But you know, until we really get to the root of the problem, we really then can find the right solution.
Ms. Jeffries.
Chronic absenteeism is definitely a problem. I think we need to look at what is causing it. And I think it depends on the grade level. We have to look at the younger students. Many times, you know, they need to get to school. And I don't know if the parents realize that that percentage is actually under two days a month, or they're chronically absent. So I think we need to look at that. I would try to work with a group of parents, teachers, administrators, have a discussion, and maybe talk about the issues, how we can get the kids back. Talk to some kids. Maybe, you know, with the upper ones, meet with some of the high school students as well, and see what could be the draw to get them to school. And the ramifications for not attending, and what we can do to help.
Ms. Robbie.
Thank you for the question. As well as, I want to bounce off of what they all said. It was all perfectly in line with how I'm thinking. We also need to talk to the students and see where they're at, and see what their interests are, and see how we can get this education involved with their interests as well. As well as finding out what the core problem is, that they're not able to make it, if it's health, family. We don't know what the problem could be until we sit down with the parents, the teachers, the administrator, and come together as a group, as a one, to try to focus on this child and figure out what the needs are to move them forward.
Mr. Walsh.
Okay. Thank you for the question. It is an issue, chronic absenteeism is a nationwide issue. Just yesterday on the radio, there was a piece about the issues people expecting that absenteeism would decline once COVID, everybody was back in school, and it's not the case. I know in Fitchburg, there's a home liaison in each school who works with parents and families to hope, to understand and explain why it's important for children to be in the classroom. And it is, as I think all of us previous people have said, it's a matter of understanding what the problem is, why the student can't make it to class. And I think it's a matter of involving everybody, not only the family, but the teachers, the student, the counselors, and asking if family members can be more involved with what's going on in the school. For example, becoming more involved with PTO so that students realize being in the classroom is the most, one of the most important things they can do.
Well, thank you for all your initial thoughts. Now, if somebody would like to essentially add based on what they've heard, or if they have a further comment or a follow-up based on something that someone has said, if you want, raise your hand. Anybody? You've all said your piece on chronic absenteeism. Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Just to say one thing that reiterate what Ms. Jeffries said. I think to be considered chronically absent is 10%, which seems like a lot, but it turns out to only be two days a month, which I think most people don't think that's a big issue. But I think two days a month really has a consequence for the student missing that much time in the course of a month or the entire school year.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah. So I think that, so first off, the label to be chronically absent means there are different levels of interventions at play. The principal speaks with the student. There could be potential court involvement if the student misses more than that or exceeds a lot of days. But also, the practical effect is that the student is put in a place where they're not able to learn. They're not at school. They're not able to participate in sports. They're not able to be with their friends, or the teachers, or to benefit from supports in the classroom. They're not, there's no check-in process between the principal, or school counselors, or students. And often, and I'm not, I don't see any blame to go around, right? But the fact is that if a person, if a young person is not in school, then they're not, then there's a whole host of supports that they're not getting. Sometimes, a student is not in school for family reasons. Maybe they're not their own, right? Maybe a person is not able to take their kid to school, and then they're counted as absent, right? We need to identify those students and provide them with the supports and the structures in place to make sure that they get a warm meal at breakfast, a good lunch, they're able to learn at minimum, that they're able to benefit from being in the school setting, that someone, that they know that someone has their back, that someone is looking out for them. And a student who's absent misses out on all those opportunities. And so I think that, and my hope, my hope is that COVID ending, by COVID, I mean the mandates and all those dictates from Boston. My hope is that now we can return to a sense of normalcy, and the community of Fitchburg gets involved, and the parents and the administrators, they can provide the supports without necessarily Big Brother looking over the back of their neck. And so the students are able to get back in school without these extra fears or these complications, or can we get within six feet of the kids? Can we touch them? You know, I'd like to see a return to normalcy.
Just Ms. England, did you, you had your hand raised.
Yes, just briefly, I just wanted to add, you know, I think it's sometimes easy to be reactive, and I think in this situation, it would also be good to really try to be proactive. And much as you have an evacuation plan for an emergency, I think there could be some contingency plans set into place for a variety of possibilities of why we have these absences.
And you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I also think of, you know, the student being out, they're missing all kinds of lessons that the teachers have prepared for. They end up falling behind, needing services. It's just a domino effect. And we need to help that. We need to get the students to be in school. It's bigger. It affects behavior. You know, we have behavior problems in the classroom. A child gets frustrated because they're not where the other students are academically. That's one way that students start misbehaving.
So Ms. Robbie, I was passing a note here that we had some audio issues with your initial go-around here. Did you want to maybe restate some things that you already said, just to be fair?
I can go ahead and add to what they were saying. It is very important that we do connect with these kids, and connect early on, as early as third grade. During the pandemic, I learned that during third grade, it is so important that a child learns to read. Because once they learn to read, then they read to learn. And this has happened during COVID. The third graders never read. Half of them can't even read because everybody's mouth was covered. It's important to see how to pronounce the words for them. So I think if we catch them at an earlier age, we can probably start to curve that window where they're no longer interested.
Last few seconds. Does he maybe have anything to add? We can move on to the next question. The Fitchburg Public Schools are operating under an interim superintendent, John Thompson. And obviously, as the incoming school committee, as an incoming school committee member, you will have an opportunity to select a new permanent superintendent. So a little bit of a two-part question. How's Mr. Thompson doing? And also, what are some qualities or some attributes you would look for in the new superintendent that comes aboard, whoever that may be? We'll go, we'll start with Ms. England this time.
Well, you know, I don't have a lot of experience with this, with the new superintendent, Mr. Thompson. But I will say that I do look forward to learning how he operates and working with him, keeping an open communication line, and trying to just keep the, move forward with the school community.
And then so with a new superintendent coming in, whoever that may be, what were some attributes you would be looking for?
I certainly want someone who's going to be inquisitive, open-minded, open to communication, open dialogue, and really to just work together. You know, there's, there's just some things that I have seen that I, I would love to see an open dialogue.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Jeffries, sorry.
Okay. So far, I'm very impressed with the way Mr. Thompson is conducting business as the interim superintendent. I find that he is being very transparent. He wants to be present and know what's going on in his buildings. Wants to get to know the teachers, the students. The qualities that I would look for, first, the permanent superintendent, I would want someone who knows curriculum, someone that's approachable, someone that is a team player and is willing to admit that they need to be surrounded by people to help to make it such a successful district.
Ms. Robbie.
I got to know him very well during South Street when my grandkids were in school there. I found him to be very honest, very transparent. He does seem to care about the kids. I really, I'm very excited about seeing what the future holds for him. I found him to be very transparent. He is interested in the curriculums, and he does listen when a parent comes in and speaks with him. And he has all the qualities that I would really like to see in our superintendent.
And so those are the same, just following up with the second part of the question, those are attributes you would like to see?
Absolutely, yes. It's someone who's familiar with the curriculums and is not opposed to maybe thinking outside the box with some of the newer curriculums that are out there, or older curriculums that are out there, and bringing them forward as well.
Mr. Walsh.
Okay, thank you. I've gotten to know Jonathan, Mr. Thompson, very well in the almost five and a half years I've been on the school committee. When I first came on board, Jonathan was principal at South Street Elementary School. When Mr. Jokela was hired as permanent superintendent, Jonathan was the assistant superintendent for curriculum. And he is now interim superintendent. And I've always been impressed with his approachability. And I think that's a quality that one needs to have if you're going to be superintendent, not only approachability by teachers, but also by all of the different staff in the school district, and also by parents. In terms of attributes, looking forward for who the permanent superintendent might be, a lot of those have already been voiced here. But I think approachable is one. I think a superintendent has to realize that the superintendent can't do, can't create a successful district by him or herself. It's a team effort, and I think having good principals and assistant superintendents with him, it's a quality that's needed and is a must for us to continue to succeed.
Yeah, Mr. Batanzi.
I think the current interim superintendent possesses all the qualities that I would look for when making the decision to hire the next superintendent for Fitchburg Public Schools. I note that he was elected unanimous, or he received unanimous support of the school committee for his interim appointment. And I encourage you to watch the recent school committee meetings, because I think school committee Rosemary Reynolds may be stealing our thunder. Because at the most recent meeting, she was so enamored, my words, not hers, she was so enamored by the job he's doing, and I support her motion, that she moved at the meeting to hire him on a permanent basis. No negotiations, no outside consultancy, moved to hire him. It was out of the ordinary, to say the least, but I think the matter might be coming before the school committee at the beginning of the month of November, so one day before the election. But had, if we elect the next superintendent, if we're honored to do that, he would receive my enthusiastic support. The qualities that I look for, that I think he possesses, I don't know the gentleman personally, but based upon my observations within the district and the school committee meetings, he is open, approachable, he listens to the members of the community, he receives feedback well, and he takes that feedback and makes change. He spoke at the most recent school committee meeting, October 6th, I believe it was, about his goals. He has a three-year plan that he is working on for himself. And the first year is very intensive, data-driven, a data-driven focus on the Fitchburg Public Schools. And that's me, quite frankly. I'm a numbers guy, I'm a data guy. So the biggest thing that I would like to see is, on the objective, improving all of our metrics, improving school attendance, improving MCAS results, improving student growth performance, improving teacher retention, improving principal retention, improving the relationship between the superintendent's office and the members of the public. Not that it's bad, but just maintaining that. Because I think that's the most important thing. Because the superintendent is often the face of the Fitchburg Public Schools.
So just following up on that point, a lot of you have brought up this theme of approachability, and ability to communicate, and ability to work well with others. That's a common theme. It's refreshing to hear about collaboration versus a sort of antagonism, so to speak. So that's certainly a positive attribute. So did you want to say something, Ms. Jeffries? I saw you had your hand raised.
No, I just think that he shows mutual respect, and I think that's important. You know, it's, we do that, I think, as colleagues, with teacher-student, and he gets it. There's mutual respect with him with everyone in the district. He sees everyone the same. You know, it's not because it's a principal, it's not because it's a teacher, parents, custodians, everyone.
All right. Would anybody else like to add anything on this subject?
And, you know, not to sort of tip our hand and concede the negotiations already, but you know, quite frankly, he is, he is a person, he is a person who has risen the ranks through Fitchburg Public Schools. As a principal, as assistant principal, as assistant superintendent, the unanimous choice for interim superintendent pending a final resolution, or vote, or search, or whatever the school committee decides, he is the person now, and I think it's his to lose, quite frankly. But again, if the decision were up to me, he would receive my support.
Well, we're getting really, we're being really efficient here at the FATV debate. High marks for Mr. Thompson. Maybe he can just get hired tonight and be done with it. So, but in all seriousness, it's encouraging that, it's encouraging that the results are good so far for the interim superintendent, Mr. Thompson. You were going to add something?
Well, I was going to add, and this might not be popular, as much as I think Mr. Thompson would be the perfect choice, I think we will see that as it goes on. I hesitate on the motion that was brought forward at the school committee meeting because I'm afraid it will set precedence for the future. And it might not be with a candidate that is as strong as Mr. Thompson. So I think we should go through the proper order of things and do the search. But he was, he's a strong candidate, so he should still remain strong in the committee's eyes, the hiring.
Just to follow up on that, the agenda will be posted tomorrow for Monday's school committee meeting. And based on the school committee that took place almost two weeks ago, my feeling is that this motion will be on the agenda at Monday's meeting for a vote to determine, to change Mr. Thompson's status from interim to permanent superintendent. Like Ms. Jeffries, I have similar feelings. We couldn't have had a better interim superintendent. Jonathan's doing a great job. But I think there is a process, and it's the process I'd like to follow, so that there is no precedent being sent. And again, nothing against Mr. Thompson. But I think the process needs to be in place and to open it up to all potential candidates, even inside and outside of the district. Thank you.
About a minute left. Anybody else said anything? Or we can just add that time to the next question, or one of the next questions. So let's go on to the next question. "Fitchburg's school system serves a diverse community. How do you plan to ensure that educational opportunities for all students, regardless of their background or circumstances, particularly keeping in mind the districting that is taking place, how do you ensure that they all have an equal opportunity to succeed?" We'll start with Ms. Jeffries.
We are a very diverse community. And I think Fitchburg does a pretty good job at trying to make it very inclusive of everyone. And I think that we can just continue to promote things that are happening across the district, and maybe start bringing people together from other buildings. Like, I know there have been things held at South Street before. And I think that maybe if we can do that at all the buildings, where we bring people so they know they can come, especially, we have children now that are in maybe two or three schools. Let the parents start to, and families get to know one another and feel comfortable so that they will come. Because sometimes, they don't want to come because they feel like they don't fit in. And once they get there and realize what we're all about, they want to come again. So I think if we just provide more opportunities for the families to experience Fitchburg Schools, it will happen.
Ms. Robbie.
I agree. We need to come up with more events and more, more than just the open house, to bring families all together so that they can communicate with each other. I live in a very diverse neighborhood, and I try to make sure I know my neighbors. I try to make sure that they know they can be comfortable with me as I am with them. And we need more of this in the school. We don't need, we don't need any more division. Listening to my grandchildren, and they talk about some of the events that go on in school sometimes that are harming, and they're losing friends over them. And we need that to stop. And let the children come together. They'll bring the parents with them, have more activities. But we really do need to bring everybody in the community together, even more. We already are pretty diverse and pretty well adjusted with each other, but I think a little more wouldn't hurt.
Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. We are, it's a very diverse community. I grew up in Fitchburg. It's not the same Fitchburg that I grew up in, but I'm glad that it isn't. I think it's, I think everybody can learn from everybody else's cultures. And the district is trying to do things, working with other groups. For example, this Saturday, in regards to Hispanic Heritage Month, there'll be an event at Low Playground. And it's jointly sponsored by the Fitchburg Public Schools, New View, and the Fitchburg Art Museum. And I think those are the kind of activities that families can get together and meet other families at events, and realize that in some cases, they're not the only one who might be in a particular situation. And I also believe that our teachers and paraprofessionals and counselors that we have make every effort to be inclusive as possible for every student in their classroom. And there, there are a lot of good things that have happened in the past few years with our students. And I'm very proud to have been a part of that, and I'm very proud to talk about what accomplishments have taken place, that I think sometimes Fitchburg gets a bad rap. But I think there's a lot of success stories in our public schools, and more people should be aware of what those are. Thank you.
Mr. Batanzi.
I'm not someone who grew up in Fitchburg. It seems like I'm the minority. I came here in 2017. I chose Fitchburg. My family and I chose Fitchburg. We have a young family because of its qualities and its potential. I want to support what Mr. Walsh said, that I don't think Fitchburg gets as good of a rap than it should. You know, we graduate students who go on to Ivy Leagues. We graduate students who go on to Harvard, who generously give up their scholarships, right? We graduate great people who are, go into excellent trades, right? I mean, I think Fitchburg has massive potential. We have great resources in the public schools. We have great access to Central Massachusetts. We have a lot of connections. And I think that, I think that, you know, we need to recognize the deserved place that we have of being a regional leader that other school districts look towards, right? Like, school districts look towards Fitchburg in terms of policy and direction. I think that we're doing great things here in Fitchburg, and I think that we should support those, and we should continue those.
Yeah, Ms. England.
Thank you. You know, I absolutely agree with Ms. Jeffries, and I feel like we have an immense amount of diversity in our school system. And I feel like the school system does a very good job of being very inclusive of the community. I think that increasing not just educational opportunities, but maybe social opportunities for families would be a great way to kind of increase, as Ms. Jeffries said, the comfort level of families in order to promote their involvement in other educational opportunities as well. Now, that could involve a cost, and I think that fundraising could be a possibility if there's room in the budget in areas, you know, that's something that has to be analyzed. But I think that, you know, increasing not just educational opportunities, but also social will help to increase overall involvement.
All right. All good, well-thought-out, thoughtful responses. So would anything like to add, or piggyback onto anything that anybody said?
I'll just add one thing in terms of what the district tries to do to involve everybody. So at the last school committee, also, there was a presentation by the three teachers who were coordinating the Washington DC trip for our middle school students. And the question came up about, you know, what it will cost, and what happens if somebody can't afford to go. And after that meeting, there was a resource subcommittee meeting, which I was unable to attend. But at that meeting, it was voted upon to provide additional funds to sort of supplement the cost of the trip. And I'm not sure what the amount was, but it will reduce the cost, the individual cost for each student so that they can attend. And I think that's, being able to travel, to go to a different location, is such a valuable learning experience. And the district has done a number of these things over the course of the years that have, long before I was on the committee, in terms of going up to the White Mountains, and doing different things where students have a chance to see and to be with other students, and to learn different aspects of life beyond the city of Fitchburg. And I think the district makes every effort to involve everybody and do whatever can be done so that they're able to participate in these activities that are outside of the classroom.
Sometimes it comes down to money. Mr. Batanzi, go ahead.
Yeah, so I do want, I do want to pick up on what Mr. Walsh was talking about. I did see that presentation on the school committee live cast. And I think that that meeting, raising money or going to Washington DC as an eighth grader, I think that that is a great opportunity to go back to one of the I think that that is a great opportunity to go back to one of the previous questions about recidivism and how do you keep kids inspired. I think providing those opportunities, right, like Mr. Walsh was talking about, of getting kids out of Fitchburg or just experiencing different things. Because you never know what you don't know, right? I didn't know my place in school or in life until high school. High school for me was a big transformative experience. That's when the internet was first getting up off the ground. But just imagine if I never had access to that, right? I wouldn't understand sort of the world that now exists, right? Maybe the inspiration for a person seeing the world through a different lens is to go to DC, or is to go to the White Mountains, or is to go to some club, right, that the teachers in Fitchburg and all over provide as an extra resource because they genuinely care. And that teacher provides the experience that changes a student's life. I think that's a great thing. I think that those are the ways to establish connections between teachers and students. And I think that any support that we can provide as a school committee to those teachers or administrators or superintendents is a great thing, and we should do it.
Anyone else? Ms. Robbie, go ahead.
Yes, I have a, my grandson went to DC. And the growth, I can't explain to you the growth that you will see in these kids just by taking this trip and seeing a different place is so important. And I really would like to see more of this happen in our school. And I think we can do some fundraising, and I think we can make it happen. Because the growth that happens in these kids is phenomenal. He is now energized and wants to go to school every day, and he has goals to go to MIT. And we don't know what these kids' goals are until we introduce them to different aspects of life.
Go ahead.
I also think we're fortunate in Fitchburg that we have the 21st Century After School Program. And a lot of our students that stay for that, they're experiencing things that they might not have otherwise. So that has been a real positive influence on these children and what they want to do later, because they get to try different things, whether it's cooking, photography, yoga. It's great.
Can I just add one more?
Ms. England, did you have anything to add?
No, I wouldn't agree more.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Ms. Ross.
So at one of the subcommittee meetings, building needs, there were students from Long Joe School presenting an issue that concerned them. At Long Joe, you know, the former high school, there was no place for them to play. There was no playground. And what I just learned the other day is, if you look at the front of, I still call it the high school, excuse me, I still call it Long Joe, to the right of the school, the city is in the process of buying another property, and that they already own one property. And that the plan is to make that into a playground for the students of Memorial. And what they want to do is bring back the students who presented this plan when they were at Long Joe, who are now at Fitchburg High, to come and be a part of the design and the needs of what could be. And the initiative really came from them. And I think that says a lot about our students.
Next question. "The Massachusetts Department of Education, in officially issued guidelines, endorses the Massachusetts Department of Public Health stance on vaccination, specifically noting in the case of the COVID vaccine that it is safe and effective, and generally promoting a pro-vaccination policy for schoolchildren." So as a school committee member, will your actions be consistent with this policy? Or will they run against this policy that the Department of Education has endorsed? We will start with Ms. Robbie.
We all have our ideas on the vaccinations. And I think for the school, it's not a medical facility. Our school is an educational facility. And therefore, I think that anything that has to do with medications or medical belongs between the parent, the child, and their physician, rather than in the educational system.
Mr. Walsh.
I believe that the vaccination for COVID work, even though I got COVID twice before, and before I had, before, first time was before there were any vaccinations, and I had a milder case later. And I know that there are some vaccinations that have been required way back when, when I was in, I still call it grammar school, elementary school. It would be, I would hope that everybody would be willing to have their child vaccinated. I understand that the death requirements, they're not requirements, they're recommendations. And I guess I would lean towards the Health Department and the Board of Health in terms of what they recommend. And if it is recommended, I would recommend that our students get vaccinated. I wouldn't require it for them to attend school.
Mr. Batensy.
Oh, boy. Nothing like an easy question to end the night. So this, this issue is very emotional for me. During COVID, I was teaching. I am a teacher, I've been a teacher for about six years. I was teaching middle school students, seventh and eighth graders. I remember distinctly the day, March 16th, 2020, when we got an email saying, "We're going to have an early dismissal today." Then I remember the next day saying, "We're going to have a two-week break." Then I remember two weeks later, the world shut down. I had, at the time, a six-month-old young girl. I was deathly, deathly afraid of catching COVID or passing COVID on to my young kid. Because at the time, Amazon packages had COVID, right? I remember the day that teachers could get the COVID vaccine at Gillette. We raced down there. I, I got my COVID shot. I cried in the bathroom for 20 minutes because I wasn't going to die, right? This is a very personal and deeply held belief that I have, that COVID is the worst thing that I have ever experienced in my life. My belief is that if you are a person who wants to avoid passing it on other people, you will get your COVID shot. I've experienced COVID shots in schools. I was there when it was required of every student. I support students and families who want to get the COVID shot or a booster in schools. I just don't know enough to comment on whether it should be mandated. I'm going to trust the representations by Mr. Walsh that it's a strong, strong suggestion. If, I hope to God that we don't go back to mandates, because that means the end of the world, really.
Ms. England.
Very difficult question. For a number of reasons, I do say that I would be against mandating it. I think it should absolutely be the choice of a family, a personal choice. What is right for one person is not necessarily right for another. And you may have your own reasons, health reasons, personal reasons, whatever the case may be. But I would absolutely be against mandating.
Okay. Ms. Jeffries.
Definitely the question of the night. I think that's going to have a lot of talk in the audience. But that's a tough one. And I really feel at this point, I would have to rely on the medical professionals and get their opinion on what should be done. And, but as far as mandating it, I would hope that the parents, if they want to have their child vaccinated, they will. And for those that don't, I'm not going to say they have to, not at this point. We need to know, I think, a little bit more before we can make that decision.
So just a little bit of a follow-up, playing devil's advocate. Several of you had made the distinction of relying on the medical professionals. Now, I know that a couple of you mentioned on an individual basis. But if we look at it from a general, overall basis, the medical profession in general supports the idea of vaccinations, specifically COVID vaccinations, but obviously, and the point was made by Mr. Walsh and perhaps others, that, you know, there's all kinds of vaccinations out there. So if the medical profession as a whole supports COVID vaccination, what weight do you give that when you say it's between a, you know, when it's between a student and their doctor? If the general medical consensus is one thing, does that provide any, you know, weight? I'm just going to throw that out there for a general comment. Anybody who wants to raise their hand can put in their two cents or more.
God willing, I'm elected to serve on the school committee this November. That doesn't make me or my opinion or my, the words that I say any more important than anyone else's. I think that this is, this is an issue of a person's great conscience. If they believe that their faith in the medical system is enough that they're willing to give the medical, the great weight of medical evidence a shot, I would, I would certainly encourage and rely and, and support that decision. I understand people of great conscience have struggled, like I've struggled, with the same decision, have come to an opposite position. I think we're fortunate that the vaccine rates in Massachusetts, for example, are 98% or thereabouts for first shots, 80% for second or subsequent shots. So my hope is that, that there is enough of, I think what the word that we used in the before times was called herd immunity. My hope is that there's enough of herd immunity that the people who choose not to get vaccinated or subscribe to mandates or whatever are then themselves protected. Because at the end of the day, it's all about our kids. And I've seen kids have COVID, and I've seen people, young people, kids pass COVID on to their elders, their mothers, fathers, whatever. My hope is that that transmission doesn't continue. It's three-plus years since this has started. I think this is the first, maybe year and a half, that I felt comfortable with going maskless, right? The mask mandates have just recently dropped. So my hope is that we don't return to what I, what I call quite frankly the before times. Like, it's, it's, it would be a failure of public health if we had a surge of outbreak, surge of COVID.
Before we move on to the next question, anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. I, you know, I struggle with this one because, you know, we've only been testing and learning about this for four years. And with all the medical testing in that, you know, rough four-year period, there's a lot of uncertainty. And, and my concern about, about making this a mandate is that we don't know what the long-term effects are on these children. And that, to me, is just as scary, if not more so, than the possibility of getting COVID. I've seen people who have gotten COVID even after being vaccinated, people who have ended up in the hospital or worse after getting vaccines. So I really feel like this is not something that we can push onto people and that we really have to let people have a personal decision.
Okay. Go ahead.
Give me, sorry. In my case, I don't believe it needs to be mandated. I think it should be each individual's personal preference. The medical field is divided on this. The example I have is for myself, I only have one lung. And with that, I'm still very healthy. With that, I did get COVID. My physician told me, definitely do not get vaccinated with the COVID. So I said, okay. I did get COVID. It was 17 days of misery. I survived it. I'm fine. I'm very healthy. I stay active. Mandating something that is not, it's not just for everybody. There are people who just cannot have it. And I'm not the only one that I know of, that the physician says, no, because it'll cause more medical issues with you. So mandating it is not going to help at all.
Ms. Jeffries, just giving up to her for a few more seconds, anything to add?
None, ma'am.
Okay. You're good. All right. So on to the final question of the night. It's going to be a little bit of a compressed schedule because we want to make sure we give enough time for our closing statements. "Parent and community involvement is crucial for the success of schools. How would you promote and encourage active and consistent engagement between parents, educators, and the local community to support our students' academic and personal growth?" Start with Mr. Walsh.
Okay. I think one of the key opportunities that, at each of our schools in the district is the PTO. And I know some, some schools have a more active PTO than others. I know just recently, at the last school committee, we accepted a gift from the PTO at Reingold School for a new shed to store materials. And, and I think if, if parents, again, I think it goes back to a previous question with a diverse community, an opportunity to come to PTO and to become involved. And I realize too, that I think one of the issues that some families deal with, most of these meetings are weeknights after school. And for a lot of people, one or both parents may be working during those times. And it might be an opportunity for some of these organizations or PTOs to meet at different times, different days, so that maybe other people would be able to attend.
Mr. Batensy.
Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Walsh said. I think that oftentimes, these meetings that we have in, in government are at non-functioning or non-available times. So I believe in two-way communication. So here's my email. My email is chris.batinsy@gmail.com. And if I'm elected to serve on the school committee, I will likewise give you my Fitchburg email address. To help solve the issue of having these meetings at awkward times, email me. Email me so I can represent your voice. If you have an issue that you can't address during a public comment, email me, and then it'll get taken care of by the school committee.
Ms. England.
You know, I absolutely agree that the PTO is a very important tool, I think, to stay involved with what's going on in the school community and to offer ideas and expand on the opportunities that we can have for our children and the families. I feel like the communications for the PTO at varying schools can be a little bit lacking. I feel like there's maybe more communication efforts that can be made, and I realize that takes some manpower. But I really believe that getting more people involved in that is very important. I went to the middle school recently, Memorial Middle School, they had, I think, two people in there. And likewise for Crocker. And those parents are soon to be leaving because their children are now growing and going to other schools. So we really have to step up and, and bring people in from the community.
Ms. Jeffries.
Yeah, I think maybe a PTO meeting could be scheduled with another activity that goes on in the building in the same night. So you're drawing them in. And yes, okay, so you have the children there too. Maybe you can provide babysitting service in the, in the gym. You know, and that could be older students, or maybe there are a couple of parents that, you know, there are two parents, one can go in with the children. I know that's not the case, but there might be a couple of parents. You don't need one-on-one for that. Also, maybe have, you know, and I know, I was at Crocker, they had a video option as well. So if you can't make it and you're, you have to cart kids off to sports, you have to, you know, get dinner ready, you can maybe turn on that computer, that device, and at least communicate there. Because I know, like, the Crocker Parent Organization is run by two hard-working parents. And it's like, how can you get the people to come?
Ms. Robbie.
I like the PTO. I think we should expand on the PTO and possibly, even though each school will have their own, maybe incorporate one also that will incorporate all the schools together so that once a month, we can all get together and bounce off of each other. What's happening at this school? What's working for that school? And also, we're going to have to have something, as my colleague said here, regarding their children. A lot of times, I could not make it, mostly because I have a younger child at home, and I would have to take her with me. So I, I think that those things would really work well.
So we have about a minute before we have to move on to closing statements. Any follow-up comments from anybody? No? All right. Well, let's go right to closing statements then. I would ask that you each keep it to two minutes or less so we can finish on time. And so I would start with Mr., Mr. Batensy.
Good morning. Start again. Good evening. It's been a long day. My name is Chris Batinsy. I'm running for Fitchburg Public School School Committee. I ask for one, I ask for your vote this November 7th. This November, you're allowed to vote for up to three members of the school committee. I request to be one of your three. I live here in Fitchburg. I've been here for over six years now. I've been a teacher for over six years. In addition to being a teacher, I'm also a soccer referee. I am a lawyer. I wear many hats. I'm a father. I have a young child. I have a young child here in Pittsburgh, and I'm going through the same decision that many of you are. What's the school going to be like? What's their teacher going to be like? And is she going to have a good future? I'm here to give each of our students as good of a public education as the one that I got. I would be happy to serve on the school committee and to represent your voices for those who can and who can't be at meetings. I would be happy to be your representative on the school committee and be responsive to you and to the community's needs while at the same time being responsive to the budgetary constraints that the residents expect and demand of her elected officials. I request that you vote for me this November. And if you have any questions, please feel free to email me at chris.batinzi@gmail.com. Thank you.
Ms. England.
My name is Lindsay England, and I am running for school committee. I am a very dedicated, loving parent of students in the school system, and I care not only about my children, but the school system and the effect on all children in the school system. I am hoping that I will have the opportunity to serve you and your children in the school system for Pittsburgh Public Schools. And I'm hoping for your vote on November 7th. Please elect me. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank FATV, Flap TV, and Mrs. Delmonica for making this night happen. I also appreciate the opportunity to come together with the other candidates. My hope is that you'll see my passion for the Pittsburgh Public Schools. That passion is what drove me to spend 36 years teaching in the system. During my career, I always strive to better myself in order to better my, serve my students, whether it was taking classes or founding and implementing programs such as Project Peace, which stands for Political Education at Crocker Elementary, attempting to break the Guinness Book of World Records for the number of scarecrows, or more recently, starting the citywide spelling bee for fifth graders. Everything has always been done while thinking about what's best for students. As a school committee member, the students will always come first. I will listen to all. I want to be the person who can bring everyone together, work with teachers, administrators, other school committee members, families. By working together, we get to think about things in different ways, in ways that we might not have thought of, in ways that might take us out of our comfort zone. The Pittsburgh Public School District is filled with educated, professional, and caring people. And it's time we let others see what we're all about. I'm excited to be given the chance to collaborate and make that happen. If you believe in the Pittsburgh Public Schools and want someone passionate about its future, please vote for me, Deborah Jeffries, on November 7th. Thank you.
Ms. Robbie.
Hi. I'm Jeanne Robbie. I'm a mother, a grandmother. I have grandchildren in the Pittsburgh Public School System. I decided it was time to try to run for the board and make a difference after seeing some of the things that were coming home from the schools that I was not in favor of. After hearing some of the complaints of not just my grandchildren, but other children in the neighborhood and other parents. Talking to some of the teachers, I have discovered that they don't all agree with some of the curriculums that they're having to teach. Talking to teachers, I was informed that they don't do spelling tests in fifth grade where my granddaughter goes because the science did not support it. And that all concerned me. So as a concerned parent and grandparent, I hope you'll vote for me. I'm not a politician. I'm just an average-day person that wants to make a difference in our community, to bring our children forward to the future because they are our future. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jim Walsh, and I'm running for reelection to the Pittsburgh School Committee. Like Ms. Jeffries, first, I want to thank FATV, Flap TV, Michael Delmonica for sponsoring, televising, and hosting this debate this evening. I am proud of the work the Pittsburgh School Committee and the Pittsburgh School District has, have accomplished in the five-and-a-half years I've served as a school committee member. Although I see a bright future for our school system and for the city of Pittsburgh as a whole, we still have work to do. I would like to continue to be a part of making the education system in the Pittsburgh Public Schools even better. Our students will play an integral role in the Pittsburgh Public Schools and the city's future successes, and I believe I can contribute to that success. Once again, I am Jim Walsh, and I ask for your vote, whether it be on November 7th or through early voting or through mail-in ballots, to reelect me to the Pittsburgh School Committee. Thank you very much.
Well, as we close out these debates, I just want to remind voters in Pittsburgh, November 7th is Voting Day. I sound like a broken record because I said this after each of the Lemonster debates that we hosted last week, that local elections, they consistently have the worst turnout, but yet, these are the folks who are more likely than the president or some US senator to have a direct impact on your life. So the candidates all did a great job articulating their particular positions on these issues. I would request that you go, you research them further, that you show up to local elections. Just takes a minute. There's five candidates here, three spots available, so you can choose to fill all three or one or two based on your preference on what the candidate stands for or how they've made their case here to the voters. And I thank the candidates all for participating. We had near-perfect attendance for these school committee debates. This can be oftentimes a thankless job. It can be hard work. It's hard work to run, powder in the pavement. So I applaud those who chose to show up for these debates. I applaud you and just thank you so much for participating. It's been a pleasure hosting. I'm Michael Delmonica. That's all.